Good evening and welcome to this Finance Subcommittee meeting of the Brockton School Committee. Today is Tuesday, September 21st. We have four items on tonight's agenda. So first, we're gonna have a FY 2022 budget update, an S R three update, school police positions, and then we'll have time for any other business that needs to come before Finance. So on the FY 22 budget update, update, Mike, will you be doing that or is Aldo?
Yeah, we have Aldo here.
Aldo, okay.
Aldo's here to give us an update.
Mr. Petronio, the floor is yours. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, that's good. You have a mic. Turn the mic on.
Good evening, everyone. So we started off this year pretty well with funds coming in. As you know, we settled our budget before the state actually finalized their budget. So at the time we set our budget, we knew there'd be an increase coming, but we set our budget off what we had. So the final budget has come out a few weeks ago from the state, and we've got about a million seven more in Chapter 70 it increased by. So that's their final figure. So I'll be bringing probably to our next meeting a request of this committee to request of the mayor, the additional funding that we're allotted to, and I'll work out the formula and have the exact dollar amount to put that money in our budget. And that'll be great because we've hired quite a few new teaching positions that we've spoken about. We're now looking at balancing off our schools, getting our virtual school up and running. That was, ended up being larger than we had thought. So, and we still have grants coming in. We have new grants coming. We'll be talking about our S R three grant, which we have to submit a proposal for, coming in. So this is the first year I can say that I'm not bouncing to the penny every other week to see how we're doing. I think we're doing pretty well this year. So probably by Thanksgiving, we'll know with what we proposed in our grants. Our budget for last year will close on, I think it's October 15th or October 21st. The city's closing the books. So at that point, we have to balance out all of our grants, all of our spending, and basically meet net school spending, and at the same time, we're still working on our reimbursements from the county. We received $600,000 from the county two weeks ago. Last week, another $600,000 from the county, and they still owe us a couple of million more coming. I'm told those are in. They're being reviewed. They're being reviewed. And at the end of that, the county may have a few million that wasn't spent by all the communities, and they're gonna give Brockton a shot at some of that money too. So I'll be looking at making more purchases that are CARES Act related for that. And at the same time that we're doing that, the county has the ability to get another 100 or 110 million of CARES Act money. So at first, I don't think they wanted to take more of that on, but I think all of the communities have basically been pushing them to take that money in. Rather than let the state hand it out, they'll hand it out directly again. So we're working on that. As soon as we got a confirmation on that, my assumption is just like last time, we're entitled to 18 or 20 million of that. So becoming back this committee, putting proposals together, we'll see what's allowed with those funds. And then we'll work on that. And like I said, S R three is quite a big number, and I'm hearing that might even be some more money after that. But that may go to more infrastructure type stuff like road surfaces and whatnot. And that may go directly to the city, but it still will benefit us in the long run. So this is a good year.
Yep, there we go. It's great that all this, this money is coming in. But, you know, and of course, we've talked about, this committee's talked about the fact that everything we're doing has to be with the goal of student achievement and improving student achievement. You know, and I know we've been obviously using the funds we've been getting in that way already, so I'm sure we'll use it wisely. And also, and I know we've talked about this too, we have to be careful with some of this money because it's not long-term money, so we want to be careful what long-term commitments we make.
Exactly.
So any questions from any members of the committee? All right. And seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda item number two, S R three update. Mr. Petronio, I assume you'll be handling that for us as well?
Both Superintendent and I will be. The S R three, like I said, the sheet in front of you, I handed out, the stapled packet. All the documentation I've received so far, we're getting $34 million. So the difference between this and the CARES Act money in S R one and two is that before we can obligate any of it, they want us to submit a plan. And this guide that I handed out goes through some of the overview, but it also shows you the areas of where they expect these funds to be spent and what they'll approve. So in the next couple of weeks, myself, Dr. Cobb's Superintendent will put together some of the larger needs that we have in our system, you know, the HVAC systems in buildings. We still have one building that's run by electricity for everything, you know, the Downey schools. We're gonna look at converting that to gas and new systems. And all these systems, we'll look for ways to filter the air, to provide more fresh air in the buildings. So as we work through the proposal, I'm actually gonna see if we're allowed to buy any buses from the S R three money, help us to continue to expand. But basically, everything we do is supposed to help the students in one fashion or another, whether it's the healthy air, you know, the clean air, whether it's additional equipment for the schools. It's just really not for the salaries that we currently have on staff. And again, as you said, it's one-time money. So we need to go through and look what sort of large improvements we can make. Again, new, you know, if you have better audio visual, if you have better surroundings for the children, they're gonna learn better. So we're gonna look and discuss all of that that we can do. The last couple of pages show, you know, what's allowable and what's not allowable. You know, not allowable bonuses, subsidizing of executive salaries and benefits, anything related to state or local teacher or facility, unions, associations. So all of that basically says is that they're focusing on students. They want all these funds to somehow go through and, again, work on our buildings and work on making things better for our students. So as we prepare that plan, we'll bring it back here.
No, so basically, we had, I had a meeting last week. So big part of S R three is stakeholder feedback. So Jess launched a, she launched a survey for all parents, teachers, and also students back in early September. She'll go over those results tonight at a full school committee meeting. And then I was gonna, and items to refer to tonight at the school committee meeting was we will hold an in-person one, I'm gonna recommend next Tuesday here at the high school for us, me and you, the school committee, to then take suggestions from stakeholders as well. So we, we had the Teams Live meeting I did with, with the parents. And then next week, on Tuesday night, I recommend that we do the in-person one to get more feedback. And then we have to send a plan, we have to vote on the plan and then send it into the Department of Education. And surprisingly, not surprisingly, but number one, from the survey results, the most parents wanted, and it wasn't by a wide margin, I think 20% of the parents had answered, wanted work done to the facilities, which obviously is something we all want as well. But it was also about, you know, summer learning programs, which we used a lot of the S R two money for, for this past summer. So those kind of accelerated programs, Saturday schools, vacation schools, making sure we have enough adjustment counselors, mentors, interventionists to work with students around social emotional, social emotional well-being. So those are, those are the items that are allowed. But again, we'll go through that tonight at the full school committee meeting. But I recommend that next Tuesday, we'll have, you know, an in-person to allow people to come. We'll set up the microphones and they can make their recommendations to us. And then we can move forward with a, with a vote the following week on how we plan on spending that money.
Sounds like a good plan. Now, I was, the only question I had, and I think you just answered it, but I just wanna confirm, we mentioned converting the Downey to gas versus electric. I know we've talked about there are some buildings that need some cosmetic repairs. I know in my part of the city, obviously, the Huntington, now that the roof is done, you know, that was the holdup to do anything inside because it was leaking what was, you know. Is, is any of this money able to be used for those things?
We put money in S R two for the Huntington. I know that we have money to do the gym over.
Right.
We need to do a new gym floor. And I know Dr. Cobb's was, I believe, was there today to make upgrades for some programs they wanna add.
Great.
But we also, I believe we have the flooring company on board now that we put a bid out to do a lot of carpet, redo carpets throughout the district. So that, a lot of that will be done at the Huntington is the flooring. There's a lot of old carpet, not only there, throughout the district. So we put a lot of money into, you know, either putting in new carpet or getting it all together and doing tile instead. That's the goal. If we don't have to replace with carpet, we don't want to. We want to do tile. Where areas we can. And then, you know, paint, new doors.
Right.
Need to be done there.
And I know Huntington isn't the only one with needs. I mean, south, other, other schools across the district have needs like that.
The new carpet and flooring is system-wide.
Good.
Yeah, that's, that's system-wide.
Do that under S R two. I didn't know if S R three had the ability for
That's what we can still use. Absolutely. That's, facilities is a big part of S R three.
Excellent.
And, you know, it can be used through 2000, or just September of 2024?
Yes.
Yeah, so S R three can be spent to September of 2024, so, you know. And a lot of it is around, again, extra things that, the goal is to put it towards things that don't have to be laid off. You know, we don't, we have one times, you know, because you know, eventually, unfortunately, money dries up, as we all know. And schools go through budget cuts, as you have dealt with for several years. And there's always that, you know, ebbs and flows of, you know, funding. So we gotta be careful of
How many long-term commitments we make.
A lot of programs, it's important to put programs in with this to make sure we have the, you know, the after-school programs, tutoring programs, you know, mentoring programs, the summer programs like we did this past year. So that's the kind of thing. You know, the programming is important, and then interventionist for students that are really struggling.
Good. Well, it sounds like, you know, for the next several years, we're gonna have some opportunities to bring in some great programming and do some good physical improvements that are much needed and have been for some time. Any other members of the committee have a comment or question on this? Ms. Asak?
You saw me turn the microphone on.
Yes.
Superintendent, so just for those that are watching, so a lot of the, just like the little, you know, paint, carpet, things like that, will be mostly in-house rather than contract those out. So that's a money saver right there, keeping it in-house.
We did, we did outsource some of the flooring because there's so much of it. There's just a ton of flooring and, you know, we're trying to move, you know, we'll, we'll do a lot of it too in-house, but there's so much of it that we did contract a certain amount of it out because
Right. I've also, I'm gonna ask the
Every school has an issue, except for the new ones. But every school has an issue with old carpet. I mean, if you go to the old Ford Junior Highs, now middle schools, obviously, there's carpet there that has to go. Here at the high school, we've ripped out carpet in over 180 rooms.
I remember that.
We haven't had time to go, but we've gone through and probably tiled half of those. But there's another half that just is sitting there with concrete floors that look terrible. But it was better than somebody tripping over ripped carpet. And, you know, so we got rid of the carpet, but we need now to go in and tile those. And, but that's throughout the district. I mean, it's, carpet's an issue all over the place in flooring. So it's a safety hazard, and if it's ripped up, and a lot of times, we'll use the duct tape approach and duct tape it back down until we can, until we can rip it out and replace it. And again, we like to replace it with tile because it's healthier.
I mean, years ago, that's what we had, was the carpet. And over the years, we're learning that there's different type of flooring. So we've learned over the years.
Oh, yeah.
So just, you know, if I can get some over at Ashfield?
Yeah, we're all over the place.
All right.
You're right. That's, that's another one. Ashfield, Brookfield.
Yeah.
All, you know, Kennedy, there's not East, Downey.
A little. I know, I know we have a little bit of money, but
All over the place.
And because of the amount of money and the time limit it has to be spent in, we will probably hire more contractors. Because if you think about it, September of 2024 is gonna come pretty fast. It's almost 2022 right now. So, and the only time you can work in these schools is when there's no one there. So that also adds the difficulty of it. You know, our staff can remove all the furniture from a room or many rooms, and then we can bring in a professional crew that would, you know, take care of six rooms in a weekend or something.
And then when we, when we, when we get, put this plan together, the Downey is dire. The, the, the heating and HVAC system is
Is there a reason that Downey's all-electric? Was there no gas in that, on that street, or?
I don't know. It's electric AV. So that was how to do electric. It's on electric AV. So it's electricity. That's cool.
I mean, I hate to see
Isn't there a song about electric AV?
Have to ask that. We rock on to electric AV.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, so, no, it's all-electric. And not, no, it's not about the electric, being electric and it costs a lot of money and energy. It's, we can't get parts for the, the system anymore. I mean, it's just, I mean, I know Jim and Ken, I mean, they've reached out all the way to California, and if they have something that fits that system, then they buy as many as they can. And it's got to the point now, we have to get an engineer on board to put a design together. And that, that system has to be replayed. I mean, we really can't, we can get through this year, but we wouldn't be able to go through another winter there with, with the system we have. So something has to be done pretty much soon. We can get, start putting a design together by an architect, and we obviously would have to put a bid out. But hopefully by the next spring, in late spring into summer, we're replacing that system. That, that's something I would, because there's, there's a chance if we allow that to go beyond next summer, there's a chance that we would maybe have to close that school because the heating system is getting that bad.
That gets priority. I mean, that's, that makes sense. But no, definitely. It's nice to be able to start doing some of these renovations. That, again, for some of us that have been on the committee for a while, it's just, it's a little surreal to be able to have that ability now to make renovations and do things that we weren't able to do for six years since we've been on the committee. So it's nice, but thank you.
Anybody else on the committee have any questions, comments? All right. Okay, I suppose we'll move on to the next item, item number three, school police positions.
Yes, so right now, Aldo, correct me if I'm wrong, we're down to eight positions. We lost three offices to the full Brockton Police. Right, Aldo, am I right with eight?
We have eight, or one is out.
And, yeah, we have eight with one that is, is not, is out right now. So
Thank you.
There's basically, we're down to seven. The lieutenant makes eight. But as far as the, who we employ, that we, right now, there's, we're down to seven. And there's word that we could be, we might be losing another three. We just, we've hired four, and we're hoping that they go to the academy in October. But we wouldn't see them until late next spring. It's just the way it works. It's almost a year. It's a good 10 months before we see officers, once we hire them, and they get into the academy. Then they have to go to the academy, then they come out and they go for training with the Brockton Police for two months, and then we get them. So the current four, we won't see until probably next summer. And then, and then with, the word is that there's three current offices that are on the list. So if the mayor calls for another list, from civil service list, there's a chance we could lose another two or three. So I'd recommend that we hire another four, put another ad out, hire another four, interview the people again that, that, you know, we had eight that passed background checks. Interview those four again, and, you know, move forward with hiring another four, which would probably, they would probably not get into an academy until February. And they, we don't start paying them until they get into the academy. They get a conditional leather, letter of employment from me. You know, they wouldn't be in until February, so we wouldn't see those offices until, you know, the start of the next winter. So probably not until like next, if we get in February, you'd probably see them sometime the following November.
Well, that's a tough thing too, is you hire, you know, like you just hired four people, but by the time that, it takes so long for them to get trained to finally get on the job, you know. And when we're apparently, you know, losing a few more, it's, you know, hopefully, if, if the committee were to approve this, we can get our staffing level up enough where, you know, we might actually have a fully-staffed school police department.
Yeah, I mean, the goal was always to have at least 12. That's always been, you know, when Lieutenant Mills came on way back, when I first started as Executive Director of Operations, and he took over as the lieutenant for school police, you know, that was the goal of his, to have it at 12. And then obviously now, we're down to eight, we're actually seven because one officer is out.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the committee on this?
The issue is, again, we, we're, you know, traffic. So we're getting help from the police, Brockton Police, they're doing traffic for us. I mean, they do all three tiers in the morning and all three tiers in the afternoon and do our high, you know, but that will end at the end of September because it's not cheap. You know, so, you know, but we wanted to get the school year off to a good start and try to get people used to coming in and out of school. So that will end at the end of September. And again, it's, it's really hard with the number of school police officers we have to cover traffic and just all safety and security to keep everybody safe, not, you know, most importantly, our students and staff, but the people that visit our buildings as well.
Right. And I was wondering, you know, when we get to these, the full staffing and we have 12, what are they typically, I mean, what kinds of things are they typically doing in a day, just to give people an idea?
So they'd get, a lot of it's, first is traffic, first and foremost, the safe come-in and going of students in the morning and afternoon. And then, you know, then they, they go into schools, I mean, they never go up into classrooms, but they, they go into schools, build relationships with the staff and with the, with the students. There's usually two or, two or three assigned here at Brockton High School. And then there's, there's cars that are assigned throughout the city to check in on schools, you know, work with the SROs and just, you know, build relationships with kids. And then there's always, you know, I forget, when we were fully staffed, that usually, I think, we used to have three on at night, three or four on at night, and obviously, that's to protect, you know, watch overnight programs that are going on. Because we have Edison Academy, we have a lot of schools that, we rent out buildings.
These meetings.
Yeah. There's leagues, there's, you know, so we have not staffed the weekend in a long time. But now we have the buses to worry about as well.
Right.
And that's something we never had to worry about before, obviously, but now, you know, we have to protect our asset.
Millions of dollars.
Yeah, millions of dollars. And unfortunately, you know, you see stories about, you know, what are they, catalytic converters that they like to steal out of buses because they can get, make a fortune, so
Are you kidding?
Oh, no, that's, that's a big thing. Yep.
Jesus.
Yeah, and that's something that I guess they get a lot of money for. I shouldn't be saying this out loud.
Don't encourage him, Mike.
But it's, it's something that we need to watch. So basically, you added that layer of
Right, right.
You know, right now, this, it's gonna take us a while to get back to that 12 because the academy.
Right, right.
Not easy getting spots in the academy, unfortunately.
Right. And you gotta, and it's not like we just hire them and they're here the next day.
No, exactly. I mean, we try to hire officers that have, that are already academy-trained. And it's just, it's difficult. You know, it's, it's not, it's not easy to keep school police officers because they have not been moved into the retirement system that is the same. I think it's with campus police, school police, they're in a retirement system that they cannot re, they, it takes a lot longer for them to retire then. So that's why a lot of times we lose a lot of young officers because you can retire a lot earlier.
Right.
When you're on the Brockton Police or another town or police. But for some reason, campus police, school police, they're in a different group with the state. So they, I think it's, they have, I think it's another, they have to do six more years than
Okay.
The other police. So, and that's nothing we can control. That's a state house. That's something that needs to be done by the state. But that's another reason why we lose a lot of guy, a lot of people.
Okay. Great. Anybody, Mrs. Sullivan?
I just wanted to maybe have the superintendent address because I did have a question from a constituent. So just so we can explain publicly that when we need the police during the day, and, and Mr. Petronio to explain, that we have a section in the budget where we have money to pay the police in our, in our budget for safety.
For safety, yes.
It's underneath safety?
Yep, especially for traffic.
For traffic, okay.
Yep.
So, because I did have a question on this, and so the public knows that the money is in the budget and where we move it to be used for safety and traffic.
Yep. And a lot of the help we're getting now is from Brockton Police offices on overtime because, you know, it's, we just don't have enough of our own offices to cover it. And we, again, it's the high-traffic areas. It's Pearl Street, it's Oak Street, it's Quincy Street, the Arnon on Belmont. There's some, you know, we, over at the Davis on Plain Street, there's, so those offices are covering. And they also cover the high school. So again, we use them for all three tiers. So they go high school, middle school, elementary. It really makes a big difference when they're not there. It's, traffic is an issue. I mean, you can see it around the Arnon. We get a lot of calls from parents, emails complaining about, you know, the traffic around schools. It's, you know, some, some we just can't control. There's just so much, there's so many cars coming. And it's a problem in all school districts. You know, the 20 minutes before school arrival and the 20 minutes after are, you know, it's a busy time. And here at Brockton High, you get only two ways in and out. Forest Ave has a lot of lights and, you know, and it's, it's, you know, there's pretty much close to 5,000 people coming and going out of a school and out of two exits. And, you know, it's, it's an inconvenience. Some people, it's basically, I'm sorry, it's gonna be, if you go near the school at arrival and dismissal, you're gonna be delayed 20 minutes. It's just, that's it. But we want to make sure that that time that they spend there is safe, especially for our students that walk. You know, and, and then parents who are picking up their, you know, their children as well. It's important to have for the safety. You're right.
Yes. And also Superintendent Thomas, could you just address their rate of pay is an overtime?
It could be anywhere from overtime, could be anywhere between 80 and 140 an hour, depending on the level of rank.
Whatever they would be paid for an overtime shift.
Yeah, it would be their overtime rate, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think I saw
Just to clarify on that, that's Brockton Police Department overtime. Our officers are there on their regular time.
Yeah, any of our officers are there on straight time.
So that's important to put that in.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Again, we just don't have enough of
So our officers are paid at their regular rate of pay?
Yes.
And then it would only be the Brockton Police officers
On the overtime.
That we're paying at overtime rate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Mendez?
Thank you. I had a question about the uniforms. They wear the same uniform as a regular police officer from the city of Brockton. Have we ever had the conversation of maybe that uniform being different just because of the stigma of, if, if their main purpose is to build relationship with the schools and the students, is that a conversation we've ever had? Like maybe, I don't know, like at my school, they literally changed the uniform this year, and I've been impacted personally. I'm like, oh, wow, like just my perspective, just the idea of them, like literally, they wear khakis and a navy blue shirt that says they're a police officer. And I personally have seen the students have better relationships with these school police rather than actually wearing the uniform. And because of our, you know, this past year, and just knowing about police brutality and things that have gone on in this country, I think it should be a conversation that someone we should start having.
Yep, I agree with that. I don't have an issue having that conversation with the chief. I know they get their police powers from the chief, so we could obviously have, we could have a safety, security, transportation meeting and have Chief Gomes come and have that conversation. Yep, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Would that be something that had to be bargained or no? Is it just a more
I don't know. We might, we'd have to, well, I'll have Dr. Moran look at the contract and see. You know, there is, they do follow, you know, we follow our own contract with their members of the teams. But also, they, they do follow the Brockton Police Handbook for their police powers. But that doesn't mean, I mean, I remember when they used to have great offices in the school, they had a great, the great program, and they were dressed the school, they had a great, the great program, and they were dressed in like what you see, polo shirts and khakis, so, but we can definitely have that conversation with Chief Gomes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minicello?
I'd like to thank the superintendent for assigning an officer at departure and arrival over at the Hancock on Pearl Street, because it was, and it is a crazy situation. Even with the officer, traffic is extremely busy over at that school. Just a suggestion to some of the Hancock parents who drop off their children, and it seems like there's more this year because of the COVID situation. I really do believe that we have more people dropping off their children, but a helpful hint is this. If you drive around and come up Pearl from Packers Farm, Torrey Street, or if you go down Pleasant and loop around and come up West Elm Street Extension, in the neighborhood, there's a nice little path that leads right to the Hancock School. So you could actually park your car and, you know, just walk, you know, I don't know, 500 feet right to the back of the school, and you're not going to have any traffic issues whatsoever. Just make sure you drive through the neighborhood slowly and responsibly. But if you park at the end of the cul-de-sac, at Sunset and Candy Lane, you're going to have a totally different pleasant experience driving to the school, dropping off your child, walking maybe up to the path with the child to the school, and it will cut down on the traffic on Pearl Street. And number two, I just want to point out, I know we were talking about, you know, changing the police uniforms and stuff, but, and the term, you know, because of police brutality, but I just want to make sure that we know that we're not talking about police brutality in this community. Since I've been on the school committee, the school police, I don't really remember one incident with a school police officer involved in any type of a police brutality situation, or even the Brockton Police with our students, so that's fortunate. I know Ms. Mendez wasn't implying the Brockton force, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we've got a very good school police force and a good Brockton Police force, and, you know, maybe that is a good suggestion about the different uniform. I wouldn't, that'd be interesting to talk to Chief Gomes about it, but, you know, that's.
Just to clarify, I wasn't saying about Brockton, I specifically said the stigma that the kids may have because of the police brutality that has occurred in this country. So I'm not talking about our police force, about any other, just to clarify that, or the critique. I was just considering, is that conversation started? Can we have that conversation? Because I think it would be, if their sole purpose is to build relationship with the schools and students, that's something we might want to consider.
I wasn't implying that you did, I just wanted to point out that we have a good school police force, and we're not dealing with.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Absolutely, no.
Uh, no one over here, right? Oh, who, all right. I'm sorry, if I'm going in the wrong order. Judy, I saw you.
Okay, I just wanted to say that a lot of school systems, they're just school resource officers. These officers are part of the city police department, they're not just school police officers. Am I correct?
Well, they're employed by us. Well, we do have four SRO, school resource officers, that are Brockton Police officers who are assigned to us, and they spend a lot of, most of their time with their middle schools, with our middle schools. And then we have the Brockton Police, like the four hires I'm asking you to approve, these are school department employees who you bargain with. So they, they are employed by us, but they get their police powers from, by the chief, and then they're sworn in by the city council.
Right.
And that gives them full police powers to operate in the city of Brockton as full police office. So if Officer Vaughn was traveling from Brockton High and going over to visit the Arnon, and he sees a crime being committed, he is going to stop and deal with that, which they've had done. So they have responded to calls, and, you know, actually, Officer Vaughn got bit by a dog chasing a bank robber this past August, when they robbed a bank on Belmont Street, so they are involved in those things. But they're employed by us, the SROs are employed by the Brock, but the school police officers are employed by the school department. We have, they have their own contract with the school department, but their police powers come from, from the city. That's the way it has to be done.
Right, and I believe that Brockton is the only school system that has a fully armed school police.
That we employ. Boston's the only other one that have armed, you know, police officers, but they strictly fall under, they're employed by the city, employed by the police department, not by the school department, but they're, it's a school division, so it's a Brockton, it's the Boston Police with a school division. We just do it an opposite way. They're our employees, and they get their police powers from, from.
Right, and I haven't known, I mean, I've been on the committee.
Right.
Eight years, and I haven't known any incidences.
No, I mean, our school police have always built really positive relationships with, and, long ago, and actually, when Lieutenant Mills came, and he made it clear that, you know, school police are there to deal with if there's a crime that's been committed. School police are not supposed to deal with discipline issues, that's supposed to be dealt with with the school administration. Discipline issues, unless, again, they rise to a level of criminal behavior, or it gets to somebody's safety is at risk, school police will get involved that way. But when there's just discipline issues that are dealt with and can be handled, they're supposed to be handled clearly by the school administration and not the school police. And again, I've been, 29 years I've been here, and I haven't seen or heard any issues.
Right, and the safety of the children and the staff is.
Yeah, and I mean, I know, and I know, and I've said this before, because people have talked about, you know, is the city, school committee going to get rid of school police? And, you know, and people, you know, people have to understand that, and with all that's gone on in the world, and with COVID, we have trained hard our officers, our staff with lockdowns and stay-in-place. I know when we were remote, we don't talk about these things, and, but that threat still exists, and that will never go away. Unfortunately, that's the world we live in. There's always going to be that threat. We always have to be ready with our staff and students on how to deal with an active shooter situation, our intruder that comes into the buildings, and it's very important to have them with us as our partner. But again, like Cynthia said, it's, you know, continue to build positive relationships, and as, you know, and they always have, and they can be trusted, and they solve a lot of things for students that we never even see.
Right, and they also ran some great cadet programs over the summer?
Absolutely, yep.
And, I think, the whole staff is Alice-trained now, right?
Yes, we're all Alice-trained. We'll be doing a refresher this year, now that we're back, but that's a good point. It's, you know, when you're remote and you're going through this, and most kids are home, it kind of goes into the back of your head, but, you know, we remember the Columbine, and Sandy Hook, and we remember the Florida situation, and, you know, you can never forget those things, just because it's been, you know, I don't even want to talk about it, but.
No, I don't like to either.
But you have to be, you still, it just doesn't go away. It's, you have to continue to have us prepared for those situations.
Yep.
Right. I see, both Joyce and Tim, I'm just going to jump in real quick with my own thoughts on the uniform issue. First of all, our school police, at least in my six years, have always been professional and done a great job, and certainly open to having the conversation, hearing, I'd love to hear the chief's thoughts on that. My immediate concern is, they often go out in the community, they address crimes if they happen to see them, but more importantly, they back up Brockton Police. So now if they're backing up the police in a situation, is that difference of uniform going to be an issue? And I suspect it might be. So I, I mean, I have that concern, but there's no reason not to have a conversation. I'd certainly want to hear what the chief had to say about it. I feel like if anybody's going to, you know, have a good info for us on that, it's going to be him. So, but yeah, like I said, I just do have that one kind of concern that it could be, could compromise one of our school officers when they're out dealing with a non-school issue. But it's a conversation worth having, anyway. So, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, my question is, contract negotiations, are they still in force with the police right now?
We are still engaged in negotiations. We, you know, we've got our next meeting next week, so that's ongoing. We don't have a deal yet.
I'm not even sure if it's possible, but I was wondering if it could be, a clause could be put in there that they can't leave for a certain amount of years?
I mean, any of those things can be brought up at the table. Obviously, you understand that I can't publicly discuss what's happening in the negotiations at this point. So, all I can say is, your suggestion is noted, and, you know, as I'm sure you understand, we can't.
Right, I'm just trying to solve that problem.
Yeah, no, and I understand the concern, and I appreciate the suggestion, and your suggestion is noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Asak?
Thank you, Mr. DiAgostino. Actually, Mrs. Sullivan and Superintendent and Mr. DiAgostino, you answered the questions. That was my concern. A lot of residents don't know that our school police officers sometimes step in for Brockton Police if needed during the day or after hours. So that was one question, and then you covered any questions that I had. So, again, we've been very fortunate to be able to have our own police officers that are, given the size of our district, this is very important. Safety is number one, and that's, I'm sure everybody will agree on that. So, you know, these added positions are just to keep our students and our staff safe, and to always keep us well-informed. So, but everyone else covered my questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Hello. Our school police department is a major asset to the city. You just look at the high school alone, thousands of people, visitors, all the events that we have. So I, you know, with the uniform, you know, with my background, you know, not going to speak for many Gomes, but I can say that's going to be a no. Because of the, you know, the line of work that they do in backing up, you know, downtown with calls, because they do respond to homes, and sometimes, you know, people, you know, this big thing about not, you know, liking law enforcement these days, that'll be a major change with that. So, moving forward, I'll make the motion to approve these four positions for the added school police.
All right, we have a motion for a favorable recommendation to the full committee on the floor by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Asak. We don't need to do roll calls anymore, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass, motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business, item number four, other business to come before finance? Mr. Minicello?
Well, I'll just mention it here, but maybe it's for the school committee meeting, but.
Can you just closer to the mic?
Certainly. So, since we're, since we started our school year, we've certainly added a number of positions. Can we get a, basically, I want to compare what the state says that we were lacking in our report, in their report, to the hires that we have, so that we can see from the start of this new fiscal year, what positions we've added, all of the positions to date, so that we can then make sure that we are not making those, these decisions based on gut, but an instinct, but on data, and filling the roles that are required, so that, so that we do not, so that we are not criticized. I want, I want to see, so from day one, from our school budget to present, at some point, when you can, Aldo.
Maybe for our next.
New positions, yeah.
Or maybe in a future finance, either the next one, or depending on the length of that agenda, we may push it off one more, but within the next one or two finance meetings, we could, yeah, just kind of have a, like he says, a comparison of, here's what the critique was, and here are the positions we've added to address them.
Yes.
Yeah, makes sense.
But I want all the positions, every position, you know, even these included, you know what I mean? Every, every position, so that we can say, okay, these go to this, and these go to this. This goes to safety, this goes to curriculum, this goes to oversight, that was the big thing.
Yeah.
We didn't have, you know, oversight positions to watch over everyone when we were trying to, you know, keep bodies and class sizes small, we, you know, we didn't have anyone, we didn't have enough supervising. So, all the positions, so we can compare what we have and to who's watching and who's supervising.
All right, we will have that on the agenda for either the next finance or the one after that, but it'll be one of the next two. We'll, we'll have, we'll have that on the agenda. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else, other business for finance? Going once, going twice. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Sullivan, all in favor. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
September 21st, meeting of the Brockton School Committee to Order. First, we will establish a quorum. Mr. Minicello, here. Ms. Mendez?
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Asak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Okay, and the mayor did reach out to me that he would likely be unable to join us this evening, is, he's got another commitment that he is attending. Okay, then we will have the salute, our beautiful flag.
Flag, not flag.
Flag, salute to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, with its hands.
One nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. Melinda, I understand there's no hearing of visitors, no one signed up?
Correct.
Okay, very good. All right, so we have our item number three, the consent agenda. The consent agenda for the public is the routine bundling of school committee business. Any member of the committee has the right to pull out an item from the consent agenda for individual debate or discussion, but it is, if no committee member does that, then we can take those items as a block and keep the agenda moving. So is there any member of the committee who would like to take a consent agenda item out of order, or out of the consent agenda? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, item C.
Item C. Okay, any other items that anybody would like to take out of the consent agenda? Okay, do, let me just read the items on the consent agenda for the record. Item A, approval of September 2nd, 2021, regular school committee minutes. Item B, approval of August 25th, 2021, regular school committee minutes. Item C, which is being taken out by Mr. Sullivan, approval of 2021, 2022, home education request. Item D is the acceptance of notification of personnel appointments for certified staff. Item E, acceptance and notification of personnel appointments for non-certified personnel. Item F, acceptance and notification of personnel actions, leaves of absence, resignations, and retirements. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda, short of item C?
Motion to accept consent agenda.
Second.
Except for item C.
Except for item C.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion on the, to accept the consent, try again. Motion to accept the consent agenda, except for item C, by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Minicello. All in favor? Okay, Mr. Sullivan, the floor is yours.
Yes, I just wanted to bring up, I noticed this item C is real lengthy, and about five, six, or seven pages long, and I was just wondering, Mr. Thomas, is that because of COVID-19? Does?
Yeah, it's been a spike. I don't, not all of them. We usually have, I think we usually have between 50 and 60 students on average a year that put on homeschooling, but this obviously is much higher because of COVID.
Yeah, the list just seems endless.
Yeah, it's a long list, yep. And it's being dealt with, I had a meeting with superintendents last Friday, and it's pretty much like this throughout the state, is the homeschooling numbers are a lot higher than, they're probably up in each district between 10 to 25% of how many parents are keeping their children at home.
Do you think when that, I know you're working on the virtual school, would that take care of some of those problems?
If we, if we're able to increase staff, I mean, right now, we're, you know, we have it covered, and Dr. Zachwitz is going to give us an update tonight, but we're covering up to 400 students right now. We're not able to go any higher, because, you know, it's the staffing of it. But, you know, if we're able to increase virtual numbers, eventually you might bring some of those students back. I wouldn't, I don't know how to guess how many, but that is, it's a trend throughout the state of, and I think throughout the country, of parents keeping their students home, or children home for, because of COVID.
Let me ask you one, if this doesn't get a. Let me ask you one, if this doesn't get approved tonight, what happens to those people? What do they do?
I don't, I think it's more informational for you just to see it. We can't, all they have to do is submit the curriculum they're following to make sure it's in line with the Department of Education, but we can't deny them to homeschool their children.
Does anybody go and check and make sure that?
Well, they have to continue to provide us with updates of the progress of their children and the curriculum that they're providing.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion to approve.
I just have a question before the motion. If the superintendent could address these children that are homeschooled, we do not get money for their seat.
No.
For their seat.
No.
So, the district is losing out money for each seat?
Yeah.
Which affects us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item C? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve item C.
As written.
Okay, do we have a second? Motion on the floor by Mr. Sullivan to accept item C, seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. All in favor? Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the report of the superintendent of schools. The floor is yours, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. DiAgostino. So first, we're going to bring up our old friend, Vincent McCreena, I shouldn't, sorry, he's not old, he's just a good friend, a good friend. So, Mr. McCreena, you can go right up to the podium. Yeah, he's, Mr. McCreena is going to tell us about a very generous donation to the music program and fill us in. It's good to see you.
Good to see you all, too.
Everybody looks 10 years younger after they retire.
No, I cut hair.
Look at him, he looks like a million bucks.
I trimmed the hair. It's been with me, I jot this down today, we were supposed to do this last week, and I left the other sense up in me. So, I mumble enough as it is sometimes. Don't say anything. Anyway, good evening, and first of all, let me thank Mike, Superintendent, for giving us this opportunity to share this presentation and recognize a talented student and a music staff colleague that originally passed away. This presentation was to have taken place in the stage at an annual spring concert almost two years ago. Unfortunately, COVID-19 closed our schools three weeks before our performances. Ed Myers was a member of the Brockton Music Department. Anyone who was around here in 1970 and went to Western High, you know exactly, '70 through '70, about '82, '83, you know who I'm talking about. But he was a member of the Brockton Music Department City in the early seventies for many years, as an instrumental teacher, a trumpet instructor, general music class, and band director for the West Middle Schools for so many years, and that school was just absolutely unbelievable, that he had programs out there that would make some high school groups look like, sound like beginners. And anyway, so when Ed passed on, the family asked me to, for donation, could some donation be sent to the Brockton High School Fund. I contacted Mr. Myers' sons, Jack and Ed Myers, Jack is here this evening, and Eddie was not able to come. And I thanked him and for him for thinking of our students and for giving them the money to our, for our fund. And he also informed me that it was my decision which way the money would be used. So, at the same time, I was introduced to a student performing at a jazz concert during one of the middle school concerts. As I listened to him perform, I noticed that some natural, real natural ability to play jazz was also how to, was also, but also how to improvise. And of course, this is a gift and not everyone has it. At the end of the concert, I asked him if he had studied with anyone, and he responded, no, I don't. I asked him if he wanted to meet some afternoon and we could talk shop in one of the practice rooms, and he looked at me and then with a big smile, he said, yeah, that would be cool, man. So, we met, and as he took the trumpet out, the case, I noticed that the bell on the horn looked like he had an encounter with the refrigerator door. His mother told me that he does nothing but walk around and play, loves to play all the time, watching him all over the house, all day. Well, that was not going to be, well, that was not going to work. So, I gave him one of my student horns that I had plenty of at home to use, but I also told him that he had to return it when he graduated. And so, it was after that meeting that I knew it was exactly who would be receiving that scholarship. Jack and Ed gave me the okay to use a donation and so to purchase a trumpet. I have, I says, I have had many trumpet students, but a few with a dedication, discipline, and desire that McDaniel's S.T.M.A. has demonstrated. So, it is our pleasure to present, the family and myself, to present a Yamaha trumpet to McDaniel's S.T.M.A. in memory of Ed Myers. Wow. The bell works. I have to admit, you all right?
Yeah.
Okay. I have to admit, I had to lie to McDaniel's, I said, what are we supposed to do here? He said, bring your horn, I want to hear you play. So, did you practice today?
Well, I got to see my charts, you know.
You got to see your charts. Yeah, your braces. Unfortunately, you know, he hit this situations where sometimes those awful things stop you from being a, he's getting a little frustrated, but we're going to deal with it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's an excellent player. I also want to say that he was chosen as the best jazz performer in a South District competition and just all around, and when we get together and play, it's like a pleasure to have him as a student, he's like a sponge. So, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and once in a while, at 11:30, I got a phone call, now how do you play that? Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so congratulations, there it is.
Yeah.
Why not?
Oh, yes.
That's great.
You want a lesson on that, too? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCreena, and I want to thank the Myers' family, it's very much appreciated, and such a wonderful gift, so thank you so much.
And once again, as always, you know, amazed by the level of talent that we have from our kids here in Brockton. Congratulations, buddy.
All right, next up, we have Dr. Zakowitz, she's going to give us an update on the virtual school.
Good evening, everybody, and in this, just this brief update, I'm going to cover three things. First, some just general information about the Virtual Learning Academy. Second, what's working well, and thirdly, where are we still facing challenges? So, first of all, it is up and running with 399 students, and it's across all grades. Cindy Burns is the principal, and Christina Galant is the coordinator, and you need to know they have been working non-stop to get this up and running. So, let me go to what's working well. Well, first of all, the kids are thriving now. They are logging on, they're handling it well. Here's how Mrs. Burns put a really interesting way to look at this. She said, with all the resources that this district put together last year during the pandemic, all of you, all of that you purchased during the pandemic, it paid off. Because now we're using it not just to fill a gap in a pandemic learning, but it's being used in the way it was really intended to be used in a Virtual Learning Academy. She was describing some of the programs that are in place. She said that they're using, she put it in a much more sophisticated way. It was the way it's intended. The teachers and the students are now much better with the technology, and there are strong relationships being built already. Now, here's how the day works, just so you know, it's school. So, they have to log on in the morning, and then they have a 15-minute check-in. And during that check-in, there's activities that are appropriate to the grade level. So, it could begin with songs, or it could begin with writing, or it could begin, it's like a morning homeroom with an activity built in. And the secondary level, they're doing some social, emotional learning activities, so it's something to begin the day. Then they have their academic classes, and it's according to a time schedule. It's a real school, they're in their classes, and the programs have already finally gotten underway, and they're successful. One Cindy mentioned that I haven't seen yet, but I want to see this in operation. She talked about a lot of the programs, but one she called, it's called NearPod, and she said it's really visual and interactive for the elementary students. She said they're drawing in real time and then sharing their work with a teacher, and she said the kids have really, really enjoyed it. There's many others, too, and she can explain all of them and how they're used. The faculty is really making good use of the technology. And then at the end of the day, there's an advisory period, and that will focus on different themes, but I think you'll really like the first one they're focusing on, it's really necessary for a Virtual Learning Academy. It's on digital literacy, how to use technology responsibly, and how to have academic discourse while using technology. So, and then also, a couple of other working well points is that special education students are, it's all fully staffed for our special education students, their needs are being met, and huge kudos to Laurie Mason and her team for getting this all set up. That was not easy, because you have to meet the needs of every student, and this is for all Brockton's kids. So, she did, she and her team did a fantastic job. And also in EL, Kelly Jones and her team did a fantastic job trying to meet our kids' language learning needs. It has really become a school for all kids, and so far, they're thriving. Now, let me go to the third aspect, because some of you may have heard from folks we had some struggles, like any new program getting set up. And here's the biggest struggle we're still having, in fact, the superintendent just mentioned it, it's staffing. I really, I could understand your comment, Mr. Sullivan, you are so right. It would be wonderful if we could incorporate all of those kids on homeschooling. My bet is also many of the parents would like that, but we simply, we can't staff it yet. Here's what's happening with the staffing. As the superintendent reported to you previously, the numbers in the virtual school exploded fast. You can almost parallel it to when the Delta variant hit, and then all of a sudden, it was like, oh, we thought we were past this, and then it exploded, and is there some other option? So, the superintendent and all of you had to cap it so that we could make this work, but we had to staff up and staff up fast. So, we did not have the teaching staff to handle the 400 students right at the time, and we were grateful for having an extra week of trying to get things ready. So, we had to scramble, by the way, we used other teachers, department heads, coordinators to step in and cover some classes until we are finally fully staffed. Almost everybody that we've asked to step in has had the same reaction, and that is, what do you need? How can I help? And that's, I think that's just Brockton spirit in action. I have to say, our Human Resources Department, led by Dr. Moran, has been amazing at how fast they have tried to get these teachers on board. But you all know very well that you can't cut corners on hiring paperwork, because that can lead to other issues. So, you can't hire anyone without the appropriate queries, fingerprints, resume checking, all of that, and they have not cut corners at all, it's just that we're trying to get things done as fast as we can. But we have to cross all the Ts and dot the Is. So, at this point, we have no elementary classes uncovered. So, every elementary class has a teacher in front of them. There was, at the beginning, there were some gaps where somebody logged on and there wasn't a teacher, it was part of the fast learning curve for us, that's all smoothed out. And at this point, so there's no elementary classes, we do have some middle and high school classes that we've had to incorporate a study time in the middle of the day. However, there is work provided for them that time, they're not just sitting staring at something else, but they've been provided with other work. Clearly, that's not what we want, and we have people right now in the hiring pipeline, so hopefully, that will be in place soon. But it won't be in place to handle, as you had hoped, Mr. Sullivan, students on this homeschooling list. That would be, this is just for the 400 kids that are there now. We also had some tech glitches in the first couple of days with kids unable to log on, but thanks to the great work of our instructional technology team, that has now all ironed out, too. We know it was frustrating to our parents and our students in those first couple of days, and we are so sorry that that happened, we wish it hadn't. You know, a parent trying to log on with their child, and you know, and the kid wants to be in school, and everybody wants to be logged on, and we had some things go down, and everybody was scrambling. So, we so, we are so grateful to our parents, a huge thank you for their patience with us on that. That tech part has ironed out. So, let me conclude by again thanking Cindy Burns and Christina Galant and their teams. You cannot know how hard they have worked to get this in place. And it's, their goal is to make this a Brockton success story, and it will be. We wish it was a smoother beginning, but this is a real example of Brockton spirit where so many people from various departments and schools, I mean, we had department heads and coordinators and teachers picking up an extra class from a school. We had people just pitching in at first to just cover classes. And so, it was a real example of where people from everywhere come together who really didn't have any connection with the Virtual Learning Academy, and they just, they covered phones, they were calling parents, because as parents were calling, we were trying to get back to them as soon as we can, or people jumping in to fix the technology. So, it was really a team effort, and that is really an example of the Brockton fighting spirit, isn't it? So, we think it's going to keep getting better and better, and we thank you for your support on that. So, myself or the superintendent would be happy to take any questions that you might have at this point.
Anybody? Ms. Asak?
Thank you, Dr. Zach. Actually, is there a specific grade that you're seeing a larger number of virtual students?
Yeah, I can actually break that, I didn't want to get too, but I can tell you.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
Is it the middle school level, high school, elementary?
It's interesting, a mix. It actually surprised me, because I thought it was going to be higher at the high school, myself, but then I thought maybe the early grades, because parents are nervous. It's really all over the place. Let me break it down by grade for you. I had that, I just didn't want to get, you know, I didn't want to take you into all of those.
No, that's fine, I mean.
But here it is by grade. In the first grade, it's 20, then the second grade is 26, third grade. And we can get, by the way, these change, you know, we're watching these day by day. So, I got this from Dr. Cancel as I was leaving the building, so it, you know, it changes. And actually, you know, Marcia will share some of the registration information, too. So, so third grade is 25, fourth grade is 43. So, isn't that funny how that, like, there's almost a double in that grade? Fifth grade is 42. So, four and five was the, was the big bubble, and that's where we're trying to, again, that's where we have a staffing shortage, because we didn't anticipate that. Grade three was 25, and then we have, grade five is 42, grade six is 30, grade seven is 28, grade eight is 28. Now, listen to this one, grade nine, 51. That one doesn't surprise me as much, though, because parents are nervous anyway, sending their kids to the high school, and they thought, you know, the big school, lots of kids, will they? So, grade 10 is 32, 11 is 35, and 12 is 24, so it's a good, it's pretty consistent with a couple of bubbles here and there. And we also, here's what we weren't sure about, you probably weren't, you're probably thinking the same thing. Like, we had this number registered, we had over 400 registered, but we were thinking, yeah, but are they really going to log in when the day comes? Yeah, they did. So, it's what parents wanted. And so, to your point, Mr. Sullivan, it will be good if we can get this settled, get it staffed correctly, and slowly grow it. I think the struggle we had was how fast it grew. We didn't expect it. So, if we can slowly grow it, we can, we can get there, I think. So if we can slowly grow it, we can, we can get there, I think.
Definitely, because I know a lot of parents were very concerned during, when we were homeschooling, as far as COVID, you know, schools were shut down. A lot of parents were very concerned. But many students actually excelled with the virtual from being home. They weren't dealing with a lot of pressures that students have, you know. So a lot of them did excel, and maybe those are the ones that are venturing this route, because it is helping them. And as far as like the homeschooling, maybe once they see this, we will be able to get them in. Because we're looking at almost 200 homeschooling, and that's, that number jumped.
That's huge, yeah.
But a lot of people probably weren't able to take advantage of this. Because again, this is a new, we're working on this, and we are going to grow this program as much as we can. So definitely, money-wise, what, are we getting the same money for the, for the virtual?
Yes.
As if they were, because I mean, we are paying for staff and things like that.
Absolutely, you have to regular school, approved by the department event, and we are getting the full tuition.
Definitely. So I mean, that's, it's more beneficial for us to grow this, to give them a choice. You have in-person or virtual. So definitely, fingers crossed, hopefully we can keep growing this program to help some of the students that, you know, prefer to learn virtually.
Right. And it's interesting, you mentioned that about the students who are thriving there more. When I talked, I talked to Ms. Burns late this afternoon to see if there were any updates, because I knew we were going to do this. And she said, there's a large number of kids. Some kids are there because their parents are insisting they be there. She said, there's a large percentage of kids that love this. That's what they would have, just as you said, it's what they would have preferred in the first place. So it's a way, I think Brockton is giving kids and families choices. It's all kinds of pathway, you know, not every size, it's, you know, one size doesn't fit everybody. So the more pathways and choices they have, the better for their success. So she said, there's a big group of kids that are in that category that you mentioned.
So superintendent, for the, for the students that are virtual, are they able to take advantage of some of, like, the music, things that are after school?
Yes.
They are, okay. So they are still able to be involved with?
They have to make the request, the parent has to make the request, but yes.
So they still have that opportunity, which is nice. Even though they're virtually, they're learning virtually, they still have access to music, drama, things like that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Dr. Zach. I just had a question on the, so these numbers you gave us. Now, are the classrooms, like, certain amount of kids in each class, or does it run that way?
Well, yes, they're in a class, although they're home. Like, the teachers are in, they're actually housed at North. But there, there's no kids in front of anybody. But yes, they log into a class. It's very, it's, it's similar to how it was set up last year, although I wasn't here. But I mean, I think things worked really well. Yeah, they're in a real class with a real-time schedule and.
The same numbers we would have in, like, regular?
Mm-hmm, oh yeah, they're pretty much.
Who would be in charge of how many?
It varies, but like, in some classes, it's 25, and another class, it might be 15 or something. But the ones that we need, we needed to staff up was when we had 43 and 42. That's not, that should not be a single class, so they're trying to split things so that.
So one teacher isn't in charge of all that?
Yeah, it needs two for those.
More like 20?
Yeah. Yeah, and the 20 to mid-20s is what you would certainly hope.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Mr. Minicello?
Hi, Dr. Zach. In terms of organizing it, are the teachers, let's say the first-grade teachers, being taught by a first-grade teacher?
Yes, yeah, they're licensed, certified teachers by grade level, yes.
So then, the students that take, let's say, a foreign language, how does that work?
Let's see, do we, have we, what do we have for foreign language right now? We have.
Either edge annuity?
Right, right, right.
Be a teach and teach in an extra class.
Yeah, and what happened, what we were using to cover some courses that have unique needs is, and teachers are usually pretty good about this. If they have a, during their prep period, they can, with compensation, teach an extra class. Now, obviously, the virtual doesn't have the, you know, there's classes that can be, if you look at the high school, for example, curriculum, there's many, many more opportunities and options. But these have to meet the standards, this is a state-approved program. So they have to meet the regular standards that, you know, that Desi sets for all kids.
How many teachers do we have actually, you know, assigned to the virtual school total?
I, you know what, I'd have to go back, I can get that information to you. I actually didn't ask Ms. Burns that question. And I'd also say, my number right now might be misleading, because, because we have some people covering a single class, that's not what we want. We want the teacher to have a regular load of, you know, regular class and all that. Right now, we have people covering, which, it isn't the best scenario. It was what we needed to do to get it off the ground. So I can find that out for you, but also know that it isn't really what the, what the desire was.
Okay, and then, can we, can we sort of, for our own, I guess, our own accountability, try to compare, like, let's say with the elementary kids, how they're testing compared to our in-school students? Because I really think that this is a, a good way to basically have a captured audience.
That's right.
So that we can compare, you know, the results in terms of, you know, our first graders in the virtual school compared to our first graders, you know, in the class. And in every category, do the same thing, you know? So that we can basically do our own checks and balances, internal accountability. Because that was, that was our concern as a school committee, you know, last year, was, you know, our kids.
I know.
You know, our kids are not in front of the teachers, and socialization and all that stuff. So I really would like to be able to have a gauge, to see, okay, is this, is this a better method, or is it not a better method? Is there a way to sort of, I guess, see the results and take the good from one and the bad from the other, and make it better, you know, all around? But, and then in terms of, I didn't know, when did Cindy Burns become the principal? Is she doing both?
Yeah, well, she's the principal in name, but she's spending, we have to have a principal in name, and then there's the coordinator, who spends a lot more time. But Cindy has, the startup has spent a ton of time, so she is doing both, yes.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that, okay.
Well, I actually, I don't think she realized how much time she.
I think she realized it either.
She'd have to spend either. It was, it was some growing pains at the beginning for us all.
And how are we doing in terms of staffing this?
We've made a lot of progress. So it opened last Monday, the 13th. So we've, Dr. Moran has been moving quickly, and we do have, we're getting staff in place. I mean, we've got the elementary pretty much covered now, with I think one, one more teacher we're looking for. And I know that the, the four specialist department heads have helped us out in a big way, covering classes. We have, you know, thanks to other, again, like Sue said, there's others, department heads and who have helped covers, cover classes. The ITSs have helped us cover classes. So people have really scrambled, so. And again, there's people at the high school picking up that extra period to really help us out to cover class. But like Sue said, sometimes there's classes that are so specialized that there's edge annuity that we still purchased, that students are able to take. We can supplement with some of those as well.
So now the people that are teaching, that are helping out from, let's say, administrators, and they certified in what they're teaching?
Oh, they have to be.
Yes, they have to be. That's, that caused the, that's the, was the hard part of, of doing this.
Just making sure they're certified.
So everyone teaching in the virtual school is certified for what they're teaching in?
Yes.
Okay.
It's why we had times when we were struggling to fill a spot, because we might have had a person, but they weren't licensed at that level, or they weren't licensed at that subject, so.
So when you say, like, okay. When we were in elementary school, I remember that we basically, I'm sure things have changed, but we all were taught at the same level. But like, when we got to the high school and middle school, you know, we had standard, advanced, honors. So in terms of like the different grades, let's say freshman, 51 kids, are they all being taught at the same level? Or some like sort of in advanced, some are in honors, some are in standard, some are?
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the advantages, and it's sort of what you were suggesting, to look at how kids are doing across this. One of the advantages, I think, is that in a virtual environment, kids will be able to master and move on their, at their own level much more. There's so many additional programs and so many additional opportunities they have. I think you'll see, I think there's multiple levels in every class, and it's driven by student mastery, as opposed to where the whole class is.
So I guess I'm, I just want to make sure some kids aren't going to get lost. So like, if you have, let's just say, for instance, the freshmen, you have half of the kids that are very advanced, and then half of the kids that need a little more TLC or whatever, or bringing them up to speed based on what happened, where they went to school in middle school. How do you differentiate the level of instruction for, you know, the kids that are at one end, and the kids that are in the other, and the kids that are in the middle, I guess?
Oh, I think that's what teachers do, whether virtually or in class. You know, a teacher, a skillful teacher will scaffold their lesson to meet the needs of the kids they have. So the virtual teacher is doing exactly the same, seeing where the kid. Often, it begins with a pre-assessment, where they're looking at where, where is the student at this point? And what do they have to do to support the student if they need more support? Or at the other end, you want to make sure a student has the ability to move fast enough and not be held back by something. So I think it is all about differentiate, you use the word differentiation, you're exactly right. That's what it is, has to be about.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I'm gonna, oh, Ms. Mendez.
Just to follow up on his question on differentiation, how does the sped services and EL services look like virtually?
They're, and fun, that was one of the most difficult challenges. That's why, kudos to Laurie Mason. We even have substantially separate students in the program. And all of their IEPs have to be met fully. And with the EL students, we had to offer additional language support. And some, in some cases, it even went beyond the school day, we have people working with kids. So it varies by student need, but I think they've done a great job at meeting the students where they are and making sure they get, they have what they need. It's really interesting, it's very different than, you know, the, the sort of typical classroom day school. In fact, you know, Laurie Mason and her special ed team made sure they called, every parent was called about, you know, are you sure, this is what you want? And, and they did, and so they made it happen. It's pretty impressive. But, but the parents generally, the ones that wanted to, the ones that were substantially separate, and they often have many medical needs, and the parent felt more comfortable giving the circumstances of COVID and family members that might be, that they were afraid could be compromised. They kept them, they wanted to keep them at home.
So it sounds like their minutes are being made after school, or do they go like in a breakout room?
All of the above, it depends on the circumstances that they need. And parents were told in advance, by the way. This is nothing that was sprung on them, oh, by the way. It was already, you know, to give this extra support. That's the advantage of a virtual school. You can change the hours and say, this will provide you from 3:30 to 4, or whatever. It depends on what the circumstances were. So there was some flexibility in that. And that's again where the Brockton spirit came in. People were doing everything they could to figure out how to make it work for any kid that was on that. Oh, and by the way, if I could ask all of you, the message, you may get calls from constituents about the waiting list. Perhaps you hear Marcia laughing from the back. It's not, it's, there's no, it's not open. I mean, these kids are coming, 400 kids are coming. So like parents keep saying to us, but they're, they're not sending them to school, they're saying they're on the waitlist. You know, if anyone calls you and says, well, they're on the waitlist, you have to say, either, you need to send your child to school. It's unlikely that there will be any openings from that, from that waitlist.
Thank you.
Who did I see next? Okay, Ms. Asak?
Dr. Zach, just a quick question. So just curious, how many are on the waitlist? Do you have like an estimate?
We have over 100.
I mean, that says a lot.
It does.
It says a lot.
Well, it's frustrating, because you want to, you really, I mean, who doesn't understand their worry and their concern as parents, and they want this, and I, and we all wish, I mean, if we could hire, like, if we could, it's not even about the hiring. It wasn't a problem with, it was about finding people, so.
Is there any, have we reached out to them? I mean, if these kids are not in, in a school, and they're on a waitlist.
No, some of, they're, they're coming to school.
Oh, they are, they're coming to school, but they have the option to transfer, okay.
Their preference was the virtual school. But when they didn't get in, we were calling and saying.
So we definitely have a demand for this virtual school. I mean, originally, it was such a small number, and now we're just growing. But as long as we get the funds, then we will accommodate and those that want to be virtual and those that want to be in person.
Right.
So no, that's, that says a lot right there.
Yeah, it does.
I have a few things, if there's no one else, is anybody, oh, Mr. Sullivan, go ahead.
Yes, Dr. Zach, I was wondering, what are the hours that these?
Oh, God, they've changed, so I'm not sure I know the exact hours now.
It's anywhere between 8 and 4.
That's, that, well, probably from end to end, it's 8 to 4. But there are kids that might be in, you know, some might start if they have the extended services at the end of the day. But pretty much an 8 to 4 is, it doesn't mean every kid is there from 8 to 4, but.
Yeah, right.
That's pretty much what it is.
It's like a flexible.
Again, we've tried to change it to accommodate what the needs are.
Yeah.
One other quick question. You had mentioned 51 kids in the ninth grade, I think it was. Is that for two teachers?
Right, oh yeah, it's not all in one, that's where we needed, and in fact, we had, we needed many subject area teachers at the high school. They need, they're taking English, math, you know, they're taking the, the subject areas too. So that breaks down across, across all the subjects.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, thank you, everybody. I'll jump in with just a couple of questions and comments that I have. First, I want to thank Principal Burns, you know, for stepping up, and, and, you know, she's always been a team player, and steps in and helps us whenever we need her to, and so we appreciate that. And, you know, Mr. Minicello made a point that we wanted to see, you know, let's look at how these kids do and compare, is this the new thing? I think that we'll find, and I've heard this from parents anecdotally, that this will be right for some kids, and traditional schooling is going to be right for some kids. And, you know, I can think of one constituent who I spoke to that said, you know, during COVID, she had a student who normally, a kid that normally excelled and struggled, but had another child that normally struggled and excelled in the virtual environment. So I think what we'll see is, you know, that, that depends on the, on the student, which is why I was fully in support of this, you know, when it came up. Because, you know, if you look at Brockton Public Schools, we always offer as many different pathways and options. I mean, we have FBA, we have Champion, we have Huntington, we have a virtual school, we have, it's an academy. I mean, you know, we've got, you know, locally, there's obviously Southeastern. Here in Brockton High, we even have vocational programs. I mean, so this kind of does fit with how we approach things in Brockton, to offer however many different options and pathways we can. So I'm glad we're doing this, I'm glad it's successful. Clearly, people are embracing it, if there's a waitlist of 100 students. I don't want to thank you and Marcia for your work on this, and the teachers, and just everybody who's been involved with getting this off the ground. Anytime you're trying to get something new off the ground like this, it's a lot of work, you know? So a couple of things that came to mind, though. So we talked a little bit about this with link, with the language classes. What about other specialist classes? Are those being incorporated? Like, I know last year with virtual learning, how the specialists went.
Yes, they have art and music, and yes, they have, that's, that's the challenge of this. It's, yep, they have all of those.
Okay. And then, could a virtual student who wanted to participate in extracurricular activities at their, you know, here at the high school, or at their neighborhood elementary or, or, or middle school, like, how would that work if they wanted to, you know, they're a virtual student, but maybe they wanted to participate in band, or, like, are those opportunities open to the virtual students?
Yes. We've actually always had that with even homeschool kids, and with, you know, they, we always offered, they, they could, you know, even back when I was principal, we had a number of homeschool students who played in the band. And so all were on teams, so we always have.
Play in sports, they can participate in all the extracurriculars, excellent. And then the other thing, and I think Mr. Minicello was kind of touching on this too, you know, here at the high school, we have IB, we have advanced placement classes, like, we have those types of, that type of coursework available. Will these virtual students also have those opportunities? Are we still kind of hammering that out?
I think it's too, yeah, I think we haven't figured that out yet, but I think the hope is yes. You know, I think, I think down the line, there's no reason that they couldn't be part of, while the IB program wouldn't be part of necessarily the virtual curriculum, they could probably have access, but like, we're still trying to.
Work all those.
We'll try to work through.
Right, and of course, it's new, it's been open a week. We're going to have to iron this, these things out as, as they come up, of course, we understand.
And I would also say, sometimes if somebody asks you, there are certain times people have to make choices about what they want. And sometimes, this. to make choices about what they want. And sometimes this option might not be for you because you can't get all of this, 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 and this. And by the way, also take Chinese or whatever. I mean, I don't, I'm just using that as an example. So there may be times, I don't think we can answer it either way yet, but there may be times where you say, you know what, this isn't, you know, this isn't an option that we can include in this, but it is offered. As you mentioned at the beginning, there are so many different programs here for students and families, they might, you know, choose another path. I think right now the numbers, I think we all know this, the numbers are being driven up by, by COVID.
Of course.
So.
You know, once we finally really truly get past COVID, then we'll really.
We'll have to see what happens with that.
See what this looks like long term, certainly. But all right. No, just a few things that I wanted to check on. So again, I appreciate, you know, all of you for your work on this. It looked like Mr. Minicello had one more.
I just wanted to just follow up briefly. I think this was a very good idea to do the virtual school. We love to have options. We definitely love to have options. My only concern is the younger kids and some of the sped kids, the socialization of these children. I just want to keep an eye on the younger kids to make sure it's working for them because, as you know, Dr. Zach, when they get to high school, if they're not prepared, it's going to be a major problem because that's going to basically tell you what direction these kids are going to go in, in terms of being productive and being able to build on what they've learned. So I just want to watch the younger kids to make sure that those kids have the building blocks to succeed later on. And certainly our sped kids, because when COVID was going on, you know, I, again, I got a, one of the things that really broke my heart was I got a, a video of a child who was literally crying at their desk. Their mom is like rubbing his back and basically saying, I can't do this anymore. I can't, you know, I'm so bored. I can't do this. And I'm like, oh. That's when I made the comment that, you know, we need to have our kids back in front of our teachers. But I just want to make sure we don't, you know, we, we don't wait too long to figure out if these kids are getting what they need for the building blocks to succeed in middle school and high school. Okay?
Right.
And I agree with Mr. Minicello, but I want to remind people that last year, those parents didn't have a choice because we were fully remote. These, these kids are here per their parents' choice. So we will continue to work with it, but.
But sometimes the parents need to be careful what they wish for.
Oh, yeah, of course.
I get it.
But you're right, you have to continue to watch them.
Five years from now, holy mackerel, my kid's not prepared to go into middle school. My kid's not prepared. So.
Right.
So we need to be there, you know, you are the educational experts. I'm not, you are. And you are too, because of education. But so I just want to make sure that someone's looking over these kids' shoulder to make sure that, you know, they're prepared. Thank you.
Maybe a future thing, you know, I know there's a lot of moving parts and we just got this going, that can be looked at is creating some socialization opportunities for the kids in the virtual school if there's a, you know, if their parents are interested in having them participate in that. But again, I know there's a lot, you've already got a lot on your plate, but maybe once we get.
And they also have to go through all the protocol of MCAS testing and.
Right. So once we get kind of the kinks worked out and get things, I mean, it's only been a.
And the, and the teacher's assessments, the grade level assessments that are done.
Right. Okay.
And we, and if a teacher feels that a student is really falling behind, we're going to have to have that open, honest conversation with the parent about returning their child to school.
Right. So this may not be.
Again, at the end of the day, it's, it's their choice.
Right. Right.
And if you don't see a kid's logging in.
Oh, yeah.
Note that, you know, obviously if.
Yeah, if they're absent, they would have to return to school. Correct. And we would follow any child under 16 that does not come to school. We would obviously have to refer to the court and for non-attendance. So that becomes a legal matter as well. And we're obligated to report that for non-attendees that are under 16. Yep. We have to follow guidelines that we have to follow for in-person school as well.
But, all right. Everybody good? All right. All right. Next, we have Dr. Cobb. He's going to come up and give us an update on transportation. My favorite thing to talk about. It's a lot better. It's not easier talking about it this week than two weeks ago. What are you trying to say, Mike?
Ah, just, you know, I felt the parents' pain, that's for sure. So, but things are going a lot better.
That might be the understatement of the year. Just a little bit better. So I gave you copies of this, it's a two-page on, copied on both sides of a update. So we're up and running. The phones are quiet and, you know, the buses for the most part are running on time, you know, barring any traffic delays. So they're not running late anymore, missing student pickups. So we're off and running and, and we're covering the routes that we were, we were set out to do at the beginning of the school year, with the exception of five routes right now that are covered by first students still and some smaller vans that are picking up students as needed. But that is cut down dramatically. Status of the buses, all of our buses are up, operation, 50 of the buses are up in operation right now. Seven large buses and 43 mini vans, so mini buses and vans are in operation currently. And we have three large buses that are still in reserve and 11, again, we call them vans, but they're actually mini buses that can hold 29 to 35 students. Driver routes right now, as of this week, we have two spare drivers that will allow Transportation Department to service extracurricular activities, programs, athletics, fine arts, junior ROTC, band, et cetera. So we're, we're building that, that capability up and being able to carry more, more of the extracurricular activities. But we have to make sure obviously that, you know, all tiers are covered in the morning and the afternoon. Right now, we still need drivers to cover routes. We are looking to hire as many as 20 drivers in the short term so we can again, take back those routes from first student and the private vendors. Currently, we have driver applications. We have 30 certified drivers that are eligible to drive and they're finishing their paperwork through the HR department. Thank you, Dr. Moran, for working on this and that. We've had a very successful social media campaign and thank you, Jess Hodges. We've amassed about 200 applications for, for driver applications. Right now, we, out of the 200 applications, we've kind of screened and called some of them, some have no experience whatsoever, some don't even have driver's license. So, but they want to be bus drivers. So, you know, we're, we, we, at the outset, Aldo and I designed this program. We knew that we were going to have to actually take people from the street and train them to be bus drivers, you know, without any experience at all. So that's kind of where we are right now. We have about 40 of the, the 200 that we've selected that qualify for the training class. So as of Monday, the 27th, we will start our first cohort of training. 16 Brockton residents will begin the first class. We have thanked Principal Burns for giving us the classroom member at the Keith Building, Room 309. So.
She's all over the place.
Jenny Burns again. She's always stepped up to the plate. So the training requirements, each trainee is required to, 60 hours of training, including the pre, pre-road test training, the classroom training for their driver's license permit. And then they'll be able to take the Massachusetts State Police Road Test. So with the first cohort, we are anticipating them to be fully licensed and ready to operate by the 25th of October to graduate the first cohort. And if you flip over the page, you'll see the, the training outline that was put together by our Training Safety Coordinator, Staviana Couture. Classroom training will be in Room 309 at the Keith Building, 8:30 to 4:30. Classroom training will consist of reviewing the driver's license and handbook and practicing learner's permit exam questions. Again, four weeks, we, we project for the completion of the program. As you can see, week one, it'll be seven days, seven, three days of seven-hour classroom training and then two hours, two days of six hours, with a total of 28 hours in the classroom to meet the requirements for the RMB. In week two, candidates will study the manual and take the permit test at the registry of motor vehicles. Candidates must follow the three subjects too for the, get their CDL permit. General knowledge, passenger endorsement, and school bus endorsement. Once they turn, obtain the learner's permit, learner's permit, they will be eligible to be on the road and start the behind-the-wheel training. And they must complete 32 hours of behind-the-wheel driving training instruction to be able to take the road test. Once they do that and we deem that they're proficient and ready for the road test, then we'll apply to the registry for a appointment to the road test, which is about two weeks, usually running two weeks to get the appointment and get them licensed and certified. Any questions?
So I just want to add before, as you know, we reached out to the state about help with the National Guard. I want to thank the mayor reaching out to our local delegation. So just to be clear about, we are getting some help from the National Guard, but they are only certified to drive 7D vehicles, which we do not own. Aldo is working with local, the vendors we use. So 7D vehicles, the 15 passenger are smaller veh, vans. They could be minivans. There's some of them are eight to 10 passenger. So when the state called in the National Guard, they only train them to be 7D drivers. So, so they really can't drive anything that's yellow, to put it easily. They can't drive anything that's painted yellow. So minivans, regular van, you know, the regular yellow vans and the large buses, the National Guard cannot help us with. So Aldo is working with the vendors that we use. They can drive for those vendors as long as they're Brockton Public School students. There's a lot of paperwork we have to complete. So he's working with the Department of Education, probably to secure about eight drivers. They will be driving Brockton students, but they'll be driving vans that our vendors own, not that we, because they, we only own CDL vehicles. Same with for a student, they only own CDL vehicles. So again, these, these National Guards, I know there was a big splash and people thought that the National Guard was going to come in and you were going to see them behind every big bus in the state. That is not the case. They can only drive 7D vehicles. And again, Aldo's is working on securing those vehicles for them. But that's the update with the National Guard.
Thank you. All right. I saw Ms. Asak followed by Mr. Sullivan.
Almost that that was a National Guard.
That was your, okay. Thank you. Ms. Asak.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb. So I just have a quick question. So when I got my learner's permit, when I drove a car, I mean, we're giving them a bus with students. How do they train them for, for bad weather? Snow, things like that. I mean, we're training them now and they're going to do their hours now. They're 60 hours and they're going to be on the road by October, I believe, 25th. How are we going to train them?
Mr. Sullivan is going to answer that question.
No, but I'm just, that's my concern is just, you know, how do they prepare them for that kind of training for bad weather?
Good question. Training is not one and done. Training is continuous and they have to, just like teachers have to recertify and do certain amount of CEUs to continue, update their licenses. It's the same for drivers. We, Staviana will keep track of their training and, and do all the, you know, she, we will offer all the courses along the way to keep them certified. And we will, when the weather changes, well, we have them go with the driver to, to train on the road as well.
They'll have, so will they have anyone just observing them till they get comfortable with the bus? I mean.
Yes, we'll have experienced drivers and we'll have our trainers as well. We're, you know, we're looking to put on, you know, we have two other trainers that we're, we're bringing on that are drivers right now that will help to, you know, do the.
Train the new drivers. I mean, I'm sure getting familiar with the roads is not, that's not an issue. It's just being able to control.
With the weather.
A large bus during bad weather. And it's, you know, we have students, so it's all about safety. And I just want to make sure that we find a way to get them comfortable during the bad weather to be able to control the buses. We've all gone through driver's ed. We know how it is in the beginning till you get comfortable and, and familiar. So that was the only concern I had.
And when the weather changes, we will, again, they will go with experienced drivers. The new drivers will have experienced drivers. If we feel they're not safe, we won't let them drive. Students will continue the training until we feel that safe to put back.
So we'll offer like maybe training for inclement weather. So we'll have special training. Just get them out there. It's more for them too.
That's all part of their continuous training. They have to get those certifications and checks as well. Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's not that.
No, you're right.
You understand where, yeah, just it's all about making sure they're comfortable. We're putting them into that position and it's all about keeping our students safe and keeping them safe. So, you know, I, I know myself, when I was a driver, learning, just getting out there in the beginning, you get more familiar with it, you get comfortable, you, you get familiar how to control your vehicle. So as long as we'll offer them more training during, once the winter months are upon us.
Absolutely. We'll be working with.
I've seen you driving in inclement weather.
At the playground where we're parking.
We just want to enjoy some of some of the training.
Other questions?
Mr. Minicello, could, could you provide us at some point, I guess, a, a financial showing us that the savings that we thought we were going to save, you know, coincides with what the numbers are, that the projections that, you know, Aldo came up with so that we make sure that what we're spending is what we thought we were going to spend?
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
I'd like to show you to date on the next finance meeting. Yeah. But we spent a lot upfront.
Right. Right. Just kind of compare projections compared to, projections based on where we are now, based, compared to projections when we planned this whole, this whole thing.
The startup, the two-year.
Two or three-year startup, we weren't going to see a huge savings. It's three, four-year, three, four, five, six is where you're going to see.
Right. But if, but if the numbers show us that, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure the upfront cost is certainly going to be.
Yep.
Significant, but we want to make sure that they are the upfront costs that we projected as opposed to something bigger than what you, what you projected.
I wanted to think with the upfront, the startup is, you know, Aldo and I have been scratching our head and saying, why do we want to do this in the first place? And why do we start with the small buses? Because it was really a pain in the neck because they're door-to-door, they don't stop on three corners and, and it would a lot getting the route straightened out. But, and I said, remember, we, we did this because upfront, that's where our biggest expense is for, for transportation. The other district transportation, the special needs, door-to-door transportation, the Kenty Vento students, that's where we're spending a ton of monies, you know. And that's where we should start seeing more immediate savings in the longer run with the bigger buses.
Right. Because our, our bigger bus cost went up 6% as, as expected to 90.
Was it six?
10%.
10%. So now we're up to.
For students, for a student's contract would up 10%.
It would up 10%. So we're up to what, 92, 96?
Around 96,000 a bus.
96,000 a bus. I mean, it won't be too long. We'll, you know, next year, we ought, we'll be over 100,000 at the rate, you know, per unit.
Which is also part of why we started this too.
Why we started. So the goal is by next year, we'll have all the buses in-house and we'll have all the drivers on the route.
It's the uncontrolled cost.
The biggest savings.
Because we have no control of our costs. Yeah, it was about being kind of the captain of our own destiny, if, if, for lack of a better way to put it.
I think it's up at 68 when we first started.
Six years ago, seven years ago?
Now we're up to.
It's 67.
Forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, 10 years ago was 49,000.
So it's almost doubled.
For a bus.
Yeah. Wow.
Long-term.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Mr. Rodriguez.
That 200 applications, you could add 12 more to it because I received 12 more resumes.
Well, that, thank you.
Just quick for people to know, I, I create, I didn't plan on doing that, but I shared the ad. For some reason, Facebook created a job ad through my profile.
Oh, wow.
So as of today, I had 51 resumes.
Wow.
So it took a while to share the link to the.
If you come down to the central office in the hallway, we have them sitting outside the transportation office. They're lined up in chairs filling out applications every day. There's a half dozen people sitting there filling out applications. So, you know,
Stop emailing Tony.
You know, we get the drivers eventually, we get the application, then we would have to train people and that was part of the plan.
Hopefully the ones I sent, they were all licensed.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Anybody else?
We had to screen some applicants out. There's a lot of reasons why we had to screen some applicants.
Of course. Well, we have to be careful, you know. So, anyone else?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Andrade Serpa to come up and give us an update on enrollment. And she's got a PowerPoint. All right.
Good evening. So these, the data that you're about to see is just based from today. The enrollment at the School Registration Parent Information Center has been ongoing, as many of you noted or maybe have seen parents down the street, on Crescent Street, outside our doors. We began the kindergarten enrollment back in March and we continue to enroll daily. So right now, as of the 21st, we currently have pre-K to grade five. We have 200 pre-K students in the half-day programs. Those are the special ed programs. Those are peers and non-peers, children with special educational needs. And then, as you all know, that you voted in and increased the. And then, as you all know, that you voted in and increased the, or expanded our pre-K, full-day pre-K students. And those seats, we had two classrooms last year, 40 seats, and that was expanded to 120 seats. And they, you made parents so very pleased and happy to have a full-day option. And there are two classrooms at the Hancock, two classrooms at the Downey, two classrooms at the Arnon for the full-day pre-kindergarten classrooms. And that does not offer transportation. That is parent transport and responsibility. And even with that, they are thrilled to have a safe, engaging space to have their child learn every day for a full day. So thank you on behalf of 120 parents. Our kindergarten enrollment, we are currently at 1169 and that, again, keeps growing daily. So as you recall, last year, parents, during the pandemic, we had remote learning. Many of our parents elected after some time to keep their kindergarteners home because they were concerned that a five-year-old on, on a screen all day wasn't a good option for them. So as kindergarten isn't mandated, they, some left and now they're coming back. So we're seeing an increase in kindergarten enrollment. So we definitely have a mixture of children who are certainly eligible for this year, could have been eligible last year, but parents elected to keep them home. So that's where we are with kindergarten. Grade one, we're at 1177, grade two, 1035, grade three, 1080, grade four, 1147, and grade five, we're at 1277. Middle schools, in grade six, we're at 1207, grade seven, 1186, and grade eight, we're at 1211. Grade nine, it jumps to 1462. And then grade 10, 963, grade 11, 1031, and grade 12, 1025. So at this moment, we're at 15290. The Brockton Virtual Learning Academy, that was discussed earlier. Our office was charged with enrolling students into the Virtual Learning Academy. The families for enrollment completed an online form that was available in all languages for them to complete. We did, however, contact every parent to ensure that they understood that the virtual school was a school in its, in itself, its own school. So if they were leaving their existing school, say they were leaving the Kennedy School, if they went to the Virtual Learning Academy, they are now a member of the Virtual Learning Academy School. So we wanted to make sure families were well aware of the commitment. And so grades K through five, they're at 171, and grades six through 12, 228 students, a total of 399 at this moment. And this number is included in the number I just given you. So right now, as we are continuing with our online registration, so from March 16th, when we started our kindergarten registration until this moment, we have brought in over 2,600 new student applications. We currently have 388 that are on hold in the queue. And what that means, our parents are working on gathering the documents that are required for registration. Sometimes some, a frustrating part for families is if a child comes from a different community and they come here, we're still required to get their school records. And some schools, it's more difficult to get than others. For example, Boston only opened their doors the, I think it was September 9th or September 7th. So there was no one there to be able to even send school records to us. So we are actively enrolling students. So right now, we have 388 on hold in the queue and that's an application. One application could have three children. So we are expecting this number to rise. And just of note, of the 2,600 that have come in, we have 335 new English learners. And these are students, these are just captured students K through grade eight. And these are new English learners requiring either structured English immersion or transitional bilingual education classrooms. And so that's a significant increase that we're seeing at this time. Again, last year, we did not have planes flying, people weren't coming, but we're seeing a resurgence of families coming through and making Brockton their home. And just for purposes of, to get a sense, if you will, of last year, we ended the year with 15,352. We are current, we are not yet at our October 1 number, but we are currently at 15,290. And that's where we stand right at this moment. I just want to give a huge shout-out, if I may, to my staff who truly has been working 12, 14, 16 hours a day for weeks trying to get our students enrolled. It's a file and, but it's not a file. It's a child that belongs in a classroom. And everyone that works in my office is well aware of that. So they're working very hard to get our students enrolled so they can be where our parents want them to be. And that's in a classroom, engaged and learning. I don't know if there's any, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Minicello. Hi there, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Good to see you. The English language learners that are now in the school system, what is that doing to like our current population? How does that look in terms of class size and things like that with the ELL?
So specifically, the number I noted is the students who have enrolled for this academic year that are new newcomers from their respective countries. And they are requiring classrooms that support their level of English or not having any English so that they really need the intensive support of a trilingual, I'm sorry, a transitional bilingual classroom or a structured English immersion classroom.
So are they isolated among themselves or are they in with?
So this specific group that I'm referring to are children who are in classrooms where all of the students in those classrooms require that same level of need.
So that's my point. How, how many students are now in those classrooms? What's been the class size?
So depending on our, depending on the grade level, depending on the school, depending on the strand, we have some that are in the mid-20s. We have some that are in the high-20s. Our highest number right now is 28 and that's in an SCI classroom, in a kindergarten classroom.
And in terms of, what would you say the overall ELL population is in the entire district?
Oh goodness, that I couldn't give you. If Kelly Jones were here, she'd be very upset with me, but that I can't give you at this moment. I think this is.
What, third?
I'm sorry, I would argue probably. I, I think the 355 students that are new for this year, I think this is something that we had seen before this time, not last year because of the circumstances, but previously, we'd seen this number of students. But early in the year and throughout the year, I anticipate that we're going, those numbers are going to grow.
Some of the criticism from the state, wasn't it that we need to have these students together with our other classrooms and stuff?
I know that there's a, a lot of work going to, going toward that end, making sure that all of our students are receiving the services they need as well as having integrated opportunities throughout their experience in school. So I know that there's a lot of work going to that end.
Well, the reason why I'm bringing it up is that I'm very sensitive about the state throwing, throwing the blame on this to the school committee. So I just want to make sure that the state is, we are complying with what the state feels is the best way to raise this population up and we are doing the best for our students. Because, you know, they basically, you know, try to put it on us, you know, basically, you know, they didn't care about the lack of funding, they didn't care about excuses. They just said, hey, you're not doing this, that and the other thing. So I just want to make sure we are doing what needs to be done and, you know, in the most effective way. Because that, I do remember that was one criticism, that there, there's isolation and they, and I guess students would learn better amongst everyone else. I mean, my grandmother told me a story when she came from Italy. There were no separate classrooms. She was in with everyone else. And she says, I, I had to, I had to learn quickly because, and that's what I did. She's one of the smartest people I know. It was so amazing, you know, she would always brag and say, I was in the classroom with Lefty the lawyer and so-and-so the dentist and the doctor. And I'm like, wow, that's a pretty good man. But, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that these students are getting what they need and that we're, maybe we can get a report from Kelly Jones, I guess, to bring us up to speed in terms of where we're at with the ELL students and what's, and what's being done.
So Kelly is involved as part of our partnership with the Department of Ed. She works with a blueprint committee that's directed by the Department of Ed to looked at what, you know, look at what the challenges were in the district review. So not only Kelly, Laurie Mason with Special Education, it's part of our partnership and support from DESI. So they work closely with Kelly. She's been meeting with them for over a year now. So she can come in and give a report on the work that that committee in partnership with the Department of Ed has done. And again, because that was the reason for the partnership. If they were going to criticize, then they needed to offer the supports to move us in the right direction and they have. I meet with the department, two members of the Department of Education, Susan Burglin and Laura Rochaine, I meet with them every other Monday for an hour. We touch base on everything that's going on in the system. And again, that part of the bilingual program, they've been involved with DESI, with members of Kelly's team, working closely with, you know, recommendations and best practices across the state. So I'll have her come and give an update.
Great, because that would, that, that will fit in so that we can make sure that who we're hiring, the positions we're hiring are coinciding with their, you know, their criticism of the district. And, and we can basically, as a school committee, make sure that we're, you know, doing what, that we're not relying on gut hunches and that we're relying on the data, you know? So I definitely want to do that. So that would be great. And also maybe Laurie Mason, you said she was, she's involved too.
Yeah, she's involved, yep.
So maybe if they could, you know, be at the same night, if you think that coincides nicely, if not separate, you know, if it's too much for one night, fine. But I just want to compare and make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do. Because we have no excuse with all this money. I want to make sure that we're, we're going to get results and that we go in the right direction. Thank you very much, Marcia. Appreciate it. Any other, oh, Ms. Asak.
Thank you, Marcia. And actually, we really all appreciate what the Parent Information Center, Union of Staff, for all the work that you guys have been doing, helping us get our students in promptly. Quick question, like how many of the students that we lost during COVID, and if I missed that number, I apologize, but how many of them, have we seen a good number come back to our district? Ones that went out of district when we were virtual and we had no other choice, given the size of our district?
Right. I remember sending Superintendent Thomas the message. We are receiving, we are seeing returns of many students who went to parochial schools, Catholic schools, charter schools. We definitely did see families returning to Brockton. And certainly that was a result of our in-person learning. But with respect to the virtual school option that we have this year for the 400 that are there, some families agonized over that decision, recognizing the need for socialization, recognizing, you know, but they had to weigh that decision against their child's, you know, health needs or, or family needs. So a lot of parents really put a tremendous amount of thought in that, going virtually. But the idea that Brockton had that option for them was really important. I think, you know, despite the, the challenges that we're facing with the, or faced early on with the Virtual Learning Academy, I really think that having that option for families is a tremendous value. And that speaks to, we have a spot and a place for everyone in this district. And whether you're an English learner, whether you're a child with special educational needs or talented and gifted, we have a space for you here in Brockton, whether that's in person or virtually. So I think that was a really great move.
No, thank you. We, you know, it, it says a lot that they came back, they came back. You know, they had no choice and they had to leave the district. But they came back because Brockton does offer a lot. We do offer, I think, probably more than a lot of other districts. And that's why students do, do come back to BPS. So thank you though, I appreciate that.
And if I could offer my thanks to you in your efforts with the backpacks, they're all gone.
Well, actually, I wasn't going to bring it up, but I do have, I have them at the warehouse.
We're happy to take them.
We will have them.
Get them all out.
We.
He's on the ramp.
We have.
Actually, we, I will be dropping off probably about 200 and then we're all done, Superintendent.
Right, right.
Ken wants them all moved.
All moved. So we did.
We'll have them delivered for you.
As I, as I was discussing, the, the newcomers that we had to our, are here, coming to make Brockton their home, we have kiosks offered in our office for families that are unable to or don't have access to computers at home to do the online registration. They've come right into our office, they've used our computers. Our staff has worked with them to support them if they needed it. And oh, how excited they were to be able to take a backpack with them as they left. So certainly that was a huge, and you know, huge thanks to you, huge effort. I know on the part of so many, I loved seeing the, like, all of the work that people came together as a community to pack the backpacks.
Yeah, we have it. Thanks to Cradles to Crayons and actually, they're delivering more next week. 500 more, Superintendent. But they're supply packs. But I will, I was.
Just tell Ken.
Oh, he already knows. So I, I was going to drop off another 2, 300. Whatever I have left is going to go to the Parent Information Center for you. But I knew you were busy, so I didn't want to head over there with all the backpacks. But facilities will drop them off for you.
Thank you.
So thank you.
No, thank you. And they're going into very pleased hands and backs. Little kids left, just a little skip in their step, ready to go, just having a sense of, you know, this is mine and I'm going to start my year. So thank you for that.
It's a nice way to welcome them.
No, absolutely. I 100% agree. Even though our major charge is school registration, parents come to our office for so many reasons, whether they're experiencing hardships or whatnot. And I think that's the story of Brockton, right? We, we all chip in and try to figure out what we can do to help serve our families. So thank you for your part in that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I just had a question. You said there were 388 in queue and there may be multiple children with those applications. Was, was that included in the 15, 290?
No.
And so then the other concerning thing, could that hurt us for October 1 by not having the, the?
No, they'll be, they'll be processed by October 1.
We, we are.
Other districts. I'm not worried about your staff, I'm worried about the other districts that we're waiting on.
Yeah.
To give us the, the records that we need.
Oh, I see.
Well, we can, we can place, as long as we have the medical records and verification of residency and we can, we can place them in the district and we can continue to force those schools to send those records.
We, we try to be very persuasive and very compelling with kids in front of us. They need to be in school. We definitely put pressure on other communities. It's their, the, the right of the child to be in school, certainly. And so we do. Even though it's been a challenge, we definitely do that. And those 388, if it was, 70 of them came in over the weekend. So we are getting registrations every single day. Some days it's 10, some days it's 50. And that's applications, not students. So it's a constant grind and we're all working really hard to get our kiddos in. And certainly we recognize the, the importance of getting our, our students into October, before October 1.
Right, and I want to make it clear, that was not a criticism of your team. That was the districts we're waiting on.
No, sure, sure.
But it, it's important because eventually those kids will end up in our classrooms, but we may or may not be funded for their education.
Right.
And of course, we'll educate them no matter what, but, you know. Okay, and then the other comment I wanted to make, and I, I know we're talking a lot about making sure that, you know, Mr. Minicello, the district review, we're responding to it with the way we're hiring. And I guess the other thing I'd add to that, you know, would have been nice if the governor been nice if the governor and DESI were using data when they were making decisions about our funding for the past 10 years, but apparently, that wasn't the case. So, you know, but unfortunately, you know, they're not going to put that in the review, because if I'm not mistaken, those are gubernatorial appointments on DESI, so they're certainly not going to critique funding mechanisms and their effects in a review, and we all know that, you know? So, any rate, okay. Anyone else?
You good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
So next, just update on S R 3 funding. So none of that money is about $34 million. We have an S R 3. None of that money has been spent. It is $34 million, $34 million, $46,000 that we have. That money is good until September of 2024. And I had a stakeholders meeting, so we have to submit a plan by October 4 to the state of how we're going to spend that money, or I hope how we're going to spend that money. And so we have to get stakeholder information from students, families. Jess is going to come up in a couple of minutes and present the results of the survey. I had a Teams live meeting with parents last Thursday. I recommended that the committee next Tuesday night, we have a, we invite the public to give us their input on how they would like to see us spend S R 3, and there's guidelines around that. It's around instruction, evidence, you know, purchasing evidence-based curriculum, making sure we have enough staff, making sure we have enough social, emotional supports, anything to do with operations around helping with COVID-19, around technology, around facilities, ventilation, HVAC systems. Those are things that, you know, example of things we're allowed to spend the money on. Making sure there's equitable services for all students, students with disabilities, students of color, and our students, English language learners, Saturday schools, vacation schools, after-school programs, summer programs, and all towards accelerated learning. And we were talking about acceleration, not remediation. And the state has, the Department of Ed has a great roadmap, it's called the Acceleration Roadmap, and we're working with them on that. So these are the things that we're allowed to spend our money on, so we have to make sure, now that we're building a new strategic plan, and we also have a Student Opportunity Act plan, we have to make sure the Student Opportunity Act plan and the S R 3 plan are all, you know, basically cohesive and working, you know, they're all, they make sense together towards the district goals. So with all these plans coming up, we have to make sure they actually say the same thing, and not each plan says something different, because obviously, we have to focus to move our kids forward, and our focus is being around effective instruction, active reading and writing, and positive relationships, that all has to be part of all the plans we put in place, SOA, S R 3, and also the strategic plan. So if we can schedule next, and we can do that under items to refer to subcommittees, we can probably have, that would be a finance subcommittee meeting, and of the purposes of having, getting input from our community stakeholders. That way, we could do it in the auditorium and do a live session with them.
So we're looking to do a finance for next Tuesday in the auditorium, which.
And it would be the one agenda item of getting community feedback, public input into our S R 3 plan.
All right. This is next Tuesday at, what time do you think, at 6?
I think we would do 6:30.
6:30? All right, everybody able to?
6:30 to 8?
What's that?
Would be 6:30 to 8.
Yeah. 6:30 to 8. Everybody able to commit to that? Okay. All right, so, yeah, we'll go ahead, we'll get that scheduled.
Yep. So I think Jess has, was it up there, and I was?
Hello.
So we started our S R 3 community survey on August 30. Since then, we've received 922 submissions. And of course, the goal is to see, to receive community input on how to best utilize these funds. You can see that our submissions are pretty evenly split, and fairly split. We had 617 submissions from individuals who represent the stakeholder group of students and families. We have a large portion of teachers, as well as stakeholders representing traditionally underserved students, other educators, BPS staff who are not teach in the classroom, school and district administrators, civil rights organizations, union leaders, elected So I'm not going to read through all these, but I'll read the top 10 priorities. These are, we asked them to list their top three priorities off of this list. Number one was facilities improvements. Number two was hiring more academic support staff, including academic coaches, interventionists, and student teaching residents. Tutoring programs and support, purchasing or expanding the use of high-quality curriculum, instructional materials, I should say, increasing personnel and services to support holistic student needs, summer learning programs, early college programs, expanding access to career technical education, creating transitional programs for students with mental health or behavioral absences, and helping them return to the classroom, building and strengthening partnerships with community-based organizations to increase student and family access. And so those are the top 10. You can read through the rest here. And this, this survey remains open. After our meeting last week, we reminded those in attendance that they could continue to complete it. So anyone watching at home, I will put this link up on our website again tomorrow morning. If you would like to complete it, please do. This will remain open until the end of the, the next meeting that we have. Thank you.
And Jess will create a flyer, and we will text that out to all families for next Tuesday's meeting. And also, if you could share, she'll post it on our Facebook page, and if you can share that on your Facebook pages, we'll have that ready for you tomorrow. And so it'll be Tuesday night, next Tuesday night.
What's the exact date on next Tuesday?
28.
The 28th, so Tuesday, February, I mean, September 28, here in the Brockton High Auditorium at 6:30. So next Tuesday, the 28th, 6:30 in the auditorium, and we will share that on Facebook, we will put that in a text message and send it out to all our families, and hopefully, people come share their suggestions with us, so we can put the plan together, take a vote on it the first meeting in October, and send it off to the state.
Very good. All right. Is that it for the report of the superintendent?
Yes, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Superintendent Thomas. Okay, under unfinished business, I have one item. So the finance subcommittee met earlier this evening at 6:00 PM. There were several items, one of which does need further action under, by the full committee. It was a favorable recommendation from the finance subcommittee to fund four additional school police positions at a cost of $59,944 each, for a total of $239,776. And that would, hopefully, once the last four and these four are all trained and ready to go, get our school police staffing at 12 officers. So that was a favorable recommendation from the finance subcommittee, and it needs a, an up or down vote from the full committee.
Make a motion to approve that recommendation?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Asak. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And then, so we have the finance meeting for next Tuesday. And then we had some requests that we obviously need to address in another finance committee meeting, which obviously wouldn't make sense for the format of this coming Tuesday's meeting. So I'm thinking if we did the 5th at 6 for another finance committee meeting, although would that give you enough time to pull together the information that was requested this evening?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Does everybody that?
I have an item to refer for subcommittee.
Okay.
So the finance, what time, are we trying to do it, next Tuesday?
6 o'clock.
6.
What do you have?
And then we're trying to do the 6:30 to 8.
I'm sorry. Let's try that again. Next Tuesday is 6:30, I apologize.
Okay. And then, is there any way that I can schedule a meeting for D E, D R E I, so Ms. Hayward could present her goals for the DEI department, maybe a 5 to 6? Does that work for?
That's up to the, yeah, 5:30 to 6:30. I mean.
Yeah, Tom and Tony are the ones that are in the subcommittee.
Right. I was going to say, are you looking for the full committee to be, just, that's the three person? So yeah, if the three of you can do it, of course.
Yeah. So if we could book that from 5 to 6.
All right. Melinda, you can book both of those. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. And then for the 5th, a 6 o'clock finance. Everybody all right with that? Okay. Are there any additional unfinished business or item to refer to subcommittee, or? Okay. Do we have any new business to come before the committee?
I do.
Ms. Asak, the floor is yours.
Superintendent, I just want to let you know, actually, everyone. So Cradles to Crayons, I, I sound like a broken record. I do. But they're an amazing organization, and we have an amazing relationship with them. And normally, they give us 500 winter coats, and 500 hats and gloves to go to our students, which is, a lot of people don't realize, our teachers, you know, go into their private funds and purchase winter coats for a lot of our students and our staff. So I'm excited to announce that they have upped the number to 1,000 winter coats, 1,000 hats and 1,000 gloves. We will be receiving these, I want to say sometime either late October. Usually, they deliver them around a little before Thanksgiving. So I, I've worked with Jess Hodges, and she's gotten an online form ready for us. We're going to have this online, that way people can, you know, submit their requests ahead of time. It's a first-come, first-served. And this way, last year was a little tougher in COVID to try to accommodate all the requests, but we have a great volunteer team now that's helping me out. So be on the lookout for that. I'll announce it again once we get closer, and once that forum goes live, that way parents and family members can reach out to us. So, but thank you again. I mean, we really definitely need to do something for Cradles to Crayons. You know, we were going to invite them to the State House, but we really need to do something special, given the amount of donations they give us throughout the year. It's just, they're phenomenal. I mean, they just, they really do go above and beyond. And I think we're the only district that they donate the amount of supplies. And actually, next Tuesday, our facilities department is going to love me for this one, but we're getting four pallets of school supplies with toiletries. But those are, those have already been designated, they're going somewhere, so they're not going to be in there that long, Superintendent.
Good thing we put the new defibrillator over there for Ken.
I mean, listen, I'm doing the best, we're getting them out of there. So we are distributing them, and actually, thank you to Mrs. Sullivan, who stepped in and helped us hand out over 900, 900 backpacks, which is, that was in less than four hours, you know, two days. We gave out 900 backpacks, and we put together supply bags. So most of the backpacks are gone, they are going to go to the Parent Information Center to be given to, I still have a handful left, we're going to give them to welcome people as they, as they register with BPS. But, so we have a couple of exciting things coming up for our families that need things. You can always reach out to us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other new business from the members of the committee? Or from the superintendent? All right, so there's no new business. The next item on the agenda is executive session, and we will be going into executive session this evening. The school committee is going to go into executive session, and I'll, I'll read the official language to have us go in in a second, to discuss strategy with respect to collective, collective bargaining with the Brockton Food Service Association, SEIU Local 888. All right, so the committee will enter executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, for the purpose of collecting, conducting, conducting strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as conducting this deliberation in a public session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session following the executive session. I do need a motion to go into executive session, and then it'll be followed by a roll call.
Motion to go into executive session. Second.
Second.
We have to return.
We have to return? Oh.
Let me try that again, I thought that was a typo.
Me too.
All right. I apologize, let me try that again. We had a second, will you retract your second? Can you retract your motion? Or you?
I'll retract my second.
Okay. I apologize. I should have, I should have known better and just read it the way you gave it to me. All right. So the committee will enter executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, for the purpose of conducting strategy with respect to collective bargaining, as conducting this deliberation in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will return in, to open session following the executive session. Now I need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second. I have a motion to go into executive session from Ms. Mendez, seconded by Mr. Minichello. I will call the roll. Mr. Minichello?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendez?
Yes.
I'm going to vote yes as well. Mr. Min, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Asak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, we will now go into executive session, and we'll return after. Okay, thank you, everyone. We have, the school committee meeting is now back in session, we have ended our executive session, and we have one more remaining item on the agenda, and that is the approval of the food service contract with SEIU Local 888 for, Melinda, what was the year span there? Was it 21 to, was it 20 to 22?
It is from September 2020, September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2023.
Okay, so it's September 2020 to August of 2023. Okay, so that item is now before the committee, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as written.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Passage unanimously. And the final item on our agenda for this evening, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Mendez, properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, and all in favor. We are adjourned.